All right, Mr. Manager.
All right, Mayor, members of council. Good to see everybody. I will give you a quick agenda overview and tonight's theme is public safety. And obviously the topics will flow accordingly. I'm going to do my own little pop-up for you based on some conversation that some of you all have had and has been going on publicly and some folks that we think we're going to have in the formal session tonight as non-agenda speakers on offshore drilling. So I'm going to take a minute and put up resolution at your spaces that I want to talk to you about. Then Norman Grief is going to stand up. Mosquito control is always a big topic this time of year and then folks are rightfully harassed, involved and concerned, so we want to give you a few minutes of kind of what's happening there. And then I'd ask Deputy City Manager Mike Goldsmith to stand up and frame the public safety conversation and you'll hear from Chief Boone and Chief Wise and Dr. Barry Knapp of EVMS on some really, I think some, Chief's going to tell you some things about sort of halfway through the year, what we're looking like in terms of statistics. And we're careful, we've talked a lot, you know, the statistics, stats have been good this year and Chief and I say, you know, let's get a ways through the year before we start talking about trends and those sorts of things. We want to share with you where we think we are. Fire Department, along with Police Department is doing some really interesting things, both collaboratively and involving bystanders. And one of the things where you all know intuitively, I think, is if something happens to somebody, the sooner they can get assistance or help, the better. And it takes, it just takes a while for our folks to get there and so we're doing some interesting things that I want you all in the community to be aware of. Then Stephen DeBarry and Pamela Marino are going to step up and talk to you about what works cities and the open data policy. And I know that's been a big topic for you all, a topic of interest. And then the short-term rentals are what most of us refer to as Airbnb legislation. Adam Molina is going to stand up and give you an update of some of the changes that went into effect July 1st. And then we'll go into a closed session. We've got three or four items that Bernard and I need to talk to you about in closed session. So with that frame, you've got a resolution interest spot. You've seen a fair bit in the press recently, or really over the last several years, but most recently about offshore drilling. I've heard from a number of you that you're hearing from constituents and that you've got interest in passing a resolution, frankly, a resolution that would be in opposition to offshore drilling. And so Bernard's helped us and his staff have framed up this resolution and we put it at your plate this evening, just to give you a chance to look at it. And if you all are inclined, then we would put this on your agenda for next Tuesday. So looking frankly for a little bit of feedback from you there.
I support this and I will tell you, I've heard from members of the Norfolk Environmental Commission and I believe they're going to be in attendance tonight to also support this resolution. They've given me resolutions from several coastal cities along the East Coast who have done the same. And I think it'd be great to support our sister city, Virginia Beach, as well.
I agree.
So looking around, everybody seems to be nodding, they're giving us a thumbs up. So what I'd ask you, if there are tweaks, you know, we focused on the impact to tourism and to the economy and there may be other things that you want to have in here and so if folks have some changes they want to have on this before we vote next week, get those to us and we'll put it on your agenda for next Tuesday.
Anything there about the military?
You know, there's not in our draft and that's certainly been a lot of conversation about the impact there, the impact on the port. So some of the things we've heard since we drafted this are those kinds of concerns. So again, we maybe we'll hear some things tonight, but if there's things we want to add to this, we've got that opportunity this week. And I probably should remind everybody in the audience that you all have the meeting tonight, the meeting on the 18th, and then you go on recess for five weeks. So we're jamming five hours.
Five weeks of pulling.
I think it's the 18th of Janu- of Fed-July until the 22nd of August.
And that's about a week.
Just about.
No. I don't know what you and Kenny might do. It's really, it's really recess for you guys away from us.
Well, that's, that is one way to look at it.
We will continue to operate the train.
All right, so I'm going to ask Environmental and Health Manager Norman Grief to step up and give you a little update of what we're doing relative to mosquito controls. And Norman, thrilled to have you with us.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
The members of City Council and the City Manager. I'm Norman Grief. I'm the Environmental Health Manager with the Norfolk Health Department. And this evening I would like to talk a few moments about, to provide a brief overview of the Health Department's recent mosquito control operations. We'll start out with a quick snapshot of what our vector control division does and that will provide a framework of our operational capabilities and where we focus our control efforts. And how do I forward this?
So if you can. There you go. Just give her the.
Okay, Anna, just one more. Okay, the Norfolk Health Department's Vector Control Division conducts a broad range of mosquito surveillance and control activities throughout the city of Norfolk and also throughout the course of the year. One of the foundational things that we do in almost every facet of what we do is, of course, education. Every encounter we have with a resident of Norfolk is a teaching moment, is an educational moment. We also do a lot of civic league presentations, community group presentations. And in terms of control, we do a lot of mosquito surveillance throughout the city of Norfolk. We actually trap mosquitoes, monitor mosquito populations to know kind of what is going on where. And we do a lot of various types of control. We do source reduction, which is the most effective form of control. We do larvicide treatments of standing water. And finally, as appropriate, we do conduct mosquito fogging operations. These are the traditional truck mounted mosquito fogging operations. Next slide. Okay, just a very quick snapshot to show you the scope of our vector control program by showing you kind of what we did last year in 2016. Throughout the course of the year, we collected and identified to the species level almost 50,000 mosquitoes. That provided us information as to cause what potential vector species are occurring where and we were able to take the appropriate control actions. We conducted 17,000 and a bit site visits. These are backyard inspections, these are treatments of ditches, these are complaint investigations. And in addition to that, we also participated in a statewide Zika awareness campaign and we distributed an additional 15,000 and some change Zika awareness door hangers throughout the city of Norfolk. And a fundamental piece of that was an ODU-EVMS mosquito control service learning project. We collaborated with them last year and the students were instrumental in helping us get this information out to the residents of Norfolk. Now, in terms of our current mosquito control response, in late June, we recognized an increase in mosquito complaint volume, especially in the Larchmont and Edgewater sections of the city. During the one week alone, the week of June the 26th, we received 90 mosquito complaints through the Norfolk Cares Call Center. And about 61 and some change of those were actually in the Larchmont Edgewater area and another 10 to 12 were in those surrounding neighborhoods. Now, of note, during this same time period, Portsmouth and Northern Suffolk were dealing with a significant mosquito problem with the likely source reported being Crane Island over in Portsmouth. And next slide, this is a map, it's a little difficult to see on the scale, but it kind of shows you the distribution of mosquito complaints for the week of June the 26th. You can see high, high concentration in the Larchmont Edgewater area, which is geographically right across the river from Crane Island. So it's likely that could have been a potential impact over here into the city of Norfolk. Next slide. Now, in response to this very high degree of mosquito activity, we conducted site visits, we conducted complaint investigations and also mosquito trapping. We wanted to know what mosquito species that we were dealing with, which would inform us into the appropriate form of a control response. Field surveys and surveillance indicated that we were dealing with eastern salt marsh mosquito. It's also called Claritatis solicitans for those who like Latin and the binomial nomenclature. And this was the same species that were also vexing parts of Portsmouth and also Suffolk. Now, interestingly, this is not a species we commonly see in Norfolk. We do not have the habitats that are conducive for these species and any numbers whatsoever. If we happen to see one, it's kind of a very rare thing for us because we do a lot of off-season tidal ditch maintenance to ensure that our tidal streams, the water flows in, flows out, and it does not create any potential for mosquito breeding habitats. Now, in terms of our response here, we conducted mosquito fogging operations in the affected area. A couple nights, a couple early mornings, and we followed those up with additional site visits and additional mosquito trapping, just to ensure the efficacy of our fogging programs. And very happy to report that we saw a substantial decrease in mosquito activity in our trap counts. One trap in the affected area, we had several hundred the week of the peak activity. The following week, we had one single mosquito in that trap. And also too, another potential sign that we were effective in our control strategies is looking at the numbers of the complaints coming through the Norfolk Call Center. This is five weeks, early in the week, I guess early in the month, 10 complaints came in that week, 10 the following, six the following, spiked to 90 and then down to 15. And, which indicates that we have that problem more or less under control. Now, in summary, this particular mosquito issue seems to be winding down, you know, thanks in part to our active surveillance, getting out there and knowing what we're dealing with. And also the control strategies that were appropriate to the situation. Now, also key in this process, this is a fundamental key in terms of our surveillance methodologies, was the open communication channels with the Norfolk Cares Call Center. There are real-time data flow with our Health Department, really provided us a lot of extra data to really help define the scope of this mosquito problem and also help us formulate the appropriate control strategies. I believe that is all.
Any questions?
It's been fairly dry. We've had a little bit of rain this week, but also with the heat, a lot of things are drying up pretty fast. I've noticed in my backyard, basically no mosquitoes. So I'm wondering if the temperature and the lack of rain has helped also with keeping the mosquitoes down.
It will depend upon the type of mosquito, the species of mosquito, and generally if it's dry, that does decrease the mosquito populations generally, but there are some species that, especially here in Norfolk in this urban environment, there's a lot of QLX species that tend to breed in storm drains and which tend to hold water even during the driest parts of the year. So we were actively out there treating storm drains in the neighborhoods, just to make sure that we don't have the potential spikes in these populations because a lot of these QLX can be potential vectors of West Nile virus. But in terms of your backyards, things that hold water, really you don't see a whole lot of activity now that things are starting to dry up.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it might not make sense, but you know, like Chesapeake is known for having a lot of mosquitoes. And so do we coordinate any of our efforts with what Chesapeake is doing, when they're doing it, so you don't kind of run them from Chesapeake to Norfolk? Can you do that, can you like run them from Chesapeake to Norfolk and then from Norfolk back to Chesapeake? And if we coordinate, can we get them all, you know, still away with?
I guess a big factor with that is our habitats are very, very different from what we see in Norfolk and what we see over in Chesapeake. Your species assemblages, the types of mosquitoes you deal with are going to be entirely different. Now, we do have a lot of collaboration with our other partners in Chesapeake and the Peninsula and Portsmouth, in a sense, there's a lot of open communication. If they have a positive mosquito pool close to the Norfolk border, we want to know that so we can go ahead and take the appropriate control measures on our border. So even during the recent mosquito issue that we had a couple weeks ago, we were in a lot of open communication with Portsmouth, with Suffolk and Virginia Beach, a lot of our other partners. There's a lot of communication work that kind of goes on behind the scenes between the entire cities of the Hampton Roads region in terms of mosquitoes and the threat of mosquito-borne disease.
One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a story recently about Canadian geese being rounded up, so to speak, and they're federally protected and around it. Do we have anything, and this might be a dumb question, but do we have anything on our website that tells people how to keep them off their property? Because in that story, they talked about how there were, there are several processes before they just come and round up the geese. So do they, is there anything on our website that tells property owners how to, what are the acceptable methods of keeping Canadian geese off their property?
I'll look across the room and see if I get anybody who wants to raise their hand and answer that question.
They're not touching it with a ten-foot pole. Apparently you need a ten-foot pole.
Laurie's scrambling to look at the website.
If not, maybe that would, you know, that might be helpful because they can be.
All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Well, I ask the Public Safety DCM, Deputy City Manager, Mike Goldsmith to come up and frame the conversation around the next 30 or 40 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, members of council, Mr. Smith. Really appreciate the ability to come up and talk tonight about the Public Safety portfolio and to hear some reports from the department heads that are working in that. Tonight, you're going to hear about some great work being done by Public Safety here in Norfolk. Chief Boone is going to open by talking about some fantastic work by the Police Department in crime reduction. That will segue into a discussion about some new programs that police and fire are working together to include a partnership that allows us to get medical aid to victims in a large event a little bit more quickly. Something that has become a best practice that we've become leaders in and been able to do that in the area. That will lead into a discussion about some outreach efforts, as well as some efforts to get our citizens involved in helping save lives. At the end of the presentation, we'll give you a little bit of a teaser on a regional project that we're working in Homeland Security that you'll hear more about when you get back from your break. So without anything further, Chief Boone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Smith. It's been a minute since I've been evaluated mid-year. Last time I was evaluated for a performance, I was at Georgia Southern University and some of you that know me know I was a member of the football team. And I never knew why I was being evaluated because by the time mid-season came around, we're undefeated. So I say that for Dr. Willby, knowing that she is a fan of older men in football. Nonetheless.
There's a lot of tension there, nothing serious.
All right. Nonetheless, I want to talk about what we've done and what we are doing. About six months ago, when I was appointed chief, we did a historical data drop-back of what's going on in our city. We went back five years, 10 years, 15 years to get an understanding where were our problem areas. Once we identified those communities, we decided to take a comprehensive look at who also were our crime drivers. And what I mean by that, individuals known to pull triggers, rob, rape, et cetera, violent individuals. We made an effort to make some internal changes with respect to our gang suppression unit. We added individuals to that unit and we made it so that they could better interface with some of our investigative units as well. We are also doing a better job at vetting victims. In the past, if we went to talk to a victim, they would normally say, "We don't want to talk to you." We are encouraging them to talk to us because it benefits them and it benefits the community. And we are also following up on all gunshots, whether it's in a house, a car, in the air, whatever the case may be. And as a result, we have, to this date, 54 less people shot this year compared to last year this time. Now, we are acutely aware of those communities that we are occupying, that we worked hard under the leadership of former Chief Goldsmith to build community relations and we do not want to do anything to rock that boat. So as a result, we typically have community activities. Our most recent activity, we had over 200 people attend where we served them hot dogs and we talked about some of the things we were doing in their community. It's very important that we highlight some of the community outreach programs that we currently have. We have 25 community outreach programs. These things are important because it fosters trust. In addition to that, the last time I was here, we talked about Clergy Patrol. Clergy Patrol will be featured on the Christian Broadcasting Network going forward, as well as Dr. Boone and I have something that we are working on regarding restorative justice for our youth. I also wanted to say that the men and women of Norfolk Police Department is working extremely hard and they are working extremely hard to build those authentic community relations. I'm not talking about the old type of policing where we did something because it was the thing to do. And as I get further in my presentation, you'll know that we are going further than we ever had to do that. So let's talk about crime. As you can see, we had a 40% reduction on homicides. Now, most of our homicides, it's not all of them, there was a relationship between the victim and suspect. 14 of these homicides involve gang members, gang associates and drug users, 14. They knew each other. Two were domestic related. Unfortunately, one involved a four-year-old kid and a high school young lady. And one is unknown, however, that individual's lifestyle had something to do with their demise. And one, unfortunately, was last weekend. Fortunately, the officer was not hurt, was in officer-involved shooting. So year-to-date, we have a 78% clearance rate for our homicides. The national norm is 62, 63. Soft. Thank you. All right, so we look at rate, we're down 20%. We look at robbery, we're down 22%. Aggravated assault, 14%. And that's important because as we focus in on those areas that I mentioned earlier, as well as those individuals, it is our theory that they are partly responsible for the robbery and aggravated assaults. So if we can minimize the impact of the things that are occurring in those neighborhoods, it affects some of these Part 1 crimes. So as you can see, we are down 18% for Part 1 crime, violent crimes. I don't think we've ever been that low. I'm not spiking the ball, it's just a fact. If you look at property crime, burglary, we're down 8%, larceny, 15%, stolen vehicle, 23, and as a whole, total property is down 15%. When you look at violent crime, property crime, total crime is 15%. We hadn't been that low in 10 years. Next, Kim? So, in response to some of the overdoses that's been going on in Hampton Roads and here in Norfolk as well, we implemented a Narcan program. Each car, 28 cars, have a kit. To date, we've used seven kits, we've managed to save two lives. We don't have many opportunities to use it because more times than likely, the fire department will get there before we will. One of the other things we are doing is to Patrol Division Open House. Now, when I used to sit on that side as the deputy chief and assistant chief, I would hear some of the council concerns and in my mind, I'm thinking, "How can we alleviate some of that?" So what we did, in addition to the civic leagues that we attend, we created an opportunity for the civic league presidents, as well as their citizens, to get to know their commander, their lieutenant, their community resource officers, once a month. Each Patrol Division, which there are three, have an opportunity for the citizens to get to know them, ask them questions that eventually, if they ask you guys, you guys are just going to turn around and ask us. So that's worked out rather well. In addition to that, it's mandate that we go to all civic leagues. Now, I consider myself the people's chief. When I go to civic leagues, I give out my cellphone number and I expect my captains and lieutenants to do the same. I believe in being responsive to the needs of citizens in Norfolk and those that have called me will say we are doing just that. E-zone commerce. Now, what that is, we've established locations where people that have, I don't know what you would, lack of a better word, socializing on social media, where you have a buyer seller they want to meet, the guy may be selling something and the buyer may say, "Meet me here." We had a couple incidents last year in which that happened and one individual was killed and another was shot and one was, became a victim. So what we've done is establish locations where anyone could go to the first precinct, the second precinct, or the third precinct and be monitored via camera and they have a safe location to do this type of activity, which is a plus because at the end of the day, we're trying to reduce people becoming a victim. Kim, next, please.
Is that like people buying and exchanging stuff like on Craigslist or whatever?
Yes, offer up Craigslist.
Great idea.
Yeah, things of that nature. So, active threat training. In summation, basically in the past, you have an active threat situation, the police respond, there's time before they actually go in. And once they make that entry, they are bypassing individuals that are seriously injured that could benefit by having fire, the fire department there. So now what we've done, we've interfaced with the fire department and we've done a various amount of training. Have issued the fire department, as well as the officers, Level 3 vests, as well as ballistic helmets and shields, so that the fire department and the police department can enter a scene, make it safe for the fire department to work on individuals while the police department do what they're trained to do, and that is find the suspect and alleviate the threat. Questions?
Hope you don't need to use them.
I hope so too. No questions?
Chief, not on the active threat, but you were talking about your lieutenants and your sergeants in the chain of command and.
That was the other. That was the open house.
Right, no. What I'm talking about is having a flow chart for us to know who your leadership is that's out in the community. It used to be a time when I was, I could walk into a civic league meeting and I knew who all the police officers were going to be in the room, who the leadership was going to be. There's been so much turnover and change in that, I can't tell you who any of the guys are. I don't know who my community and resource officers are. I know some that have been around for a while, but if there's any way that you can provide a flow chart for us, because we're out at those civic league meetings too, we like to go up and have those relationships as well. It's just, there's been a lot of retirements lately and changing, so it'd be great.
We invite you to the open house as well.
Yes, right. Well, if, if they're not on a night that we're not already at another meeting, we would go to them, so. But it would be helpful to have that. Some of the guys are great, but you know, and will come up and introduce themselves and say, "Council, so I'm the new lieutenant over here."
Or gals, my CRO is a, I mean, a superwoman and stuff.
Oh, well, that's good. I've never had a woman in any of my.
You don't want to mess with a super.
I do too.
Ms. Graves, if you had a question?
I do. And kind of tags off on what Tommy said about knowing and all these wonderful things that you guys are doing, it would be nice if somebody in Communications could let us know what you have going on for open houses and different community events. We might want to show up and participate and be out in the community with you as well. So we get these updates during, every day or whatever, about other stuff. So that can be added on to, you know, what we get, so that we can, you know, show some support for what you guys do also. And then.
Can I address that just before we move on? We have a calendar that highlights everything we're doing each month. We'd be sure that you guys get that.
I mean.
Probably give it to Breck and his staff because they know how to get that to us.
Or Laurie with Communications, she sends out an email every day. You know, and we can, and also we can help put that information out as well if it's an open house, a community event or whatever, so that you get as much participation from the community as possible. But in the victim follow-up, are you utilizing the Clergy Patrol to help you soften that victim, "I'm not talking to the police" or "I don't have anything to say" or, is that something that you're doing or is that something you're considering doing? They may just have a different approach.
That has worked in some incidents this year where the victim felt comfortable speaking to the clergy patrolman. Now, let me just crystallize, the clergy patrol are not going to situations where they would be in harm's way.
Right.
They're going to the aftermath to interface with the victim. And that has worked for us in the past, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then you mentioned that in Narcan, you all have used that seven times and you've saved two lives.
That's correct.
And a lot of times the fire department gets there before you do.
Oh, absolutely.
So is it possible that, are they eligible to have the Narcan?
You're going to see some numbers in a slide or two that are going to shock you, I think, depending on how often they're ever using.
All right, I'm done, I'm done.
Mr. Ready? Yeah? Good, okay. Chief?
All right, thank you.
Chief Wise?
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Smith, I'm going to start off with some introductions just real quick. First, Dr. Barry Knapp is our Operational Medical Director. Dr. Knapp is an associate professor at Eastern Virginia Medical School. Dr. Knapp is an associate professor at Eastern Virginia Medical School.
Full professor, sorry, chief.
Full professor. I missed that perversion.
Congratulations.
And he is an emergency room physician, but most important to me, he's our operational medical director. And what that means is that all of the pre-hospital EMS that our fire rescue members provide, they work under his physician's license. And so, he is actively engaged in the medical care that the citizens of Norfolk receive, and he's been doing, he's been serving in that capacity for over ten years, and he's a significant help. Does quality review, quality checks, and a number of things to help our system be the great system that it is.
I try to maintain a low profile over the last ten years.
And you're going to see, we tag-team pretty good. Now, I got to ask two chiefs back here, just for a moment, Deputy Chief Mike Brooks and Assistant Chief Robert Burton, the things that you're going to hear in this presentation, they had a lot to do with the community engagement activities that we're going to talk about. And I have one more introduction in a little bit that I'm going to hold till the end. But, please, Dr. Knapp and I are going to tag-team through this presentation, so we have moved on. Thanks, Kim. Okay. Just to talk a little bit about the active threat training that we did, this is pretty unique. I can tell you that it is a great relationship between Chief Boone and I, but beyond that, the members of police and fire rescue work well together, and that's not the case necessarily across the country, but it is here. And through the course of this training, we trained over four hundred and fifty firefighters, over six hundred police officers, and I just signed our policy today. So, effective today, we are prepared to put into place the training that we have done with the ballistic equipment, the safety equipment that we've issued to our firefighters. We're carrying it all of our trucks, and amen. I hope we never need it, but if we do, we are able to, I'm confident to say that we will be able to get to people and provide care quicker than many other localities might. And so, Kim, next slide, please. A little bit more to expand on the opioid situation, the overdose, and please, again, we're tag-teaming here, but in Norfolk, police officers do not respond on 911 calls for unconscious people. And sometimes, an unconscious dispatch may involve an overdose. Police officers do respond whenever a caller calls 911 and actually says this person is an overdose. And so, the opportunities for a police car to get there before an ambulance or a fire truck is smaller, but I can tell you that the ambulances and the fire trucks arrive in five minutes or less ninety percent of the time. So we do have a good response system here, but the ability for a police officer to possibly come in contact with someone who's had an overdose before 911 was ever called, the ability for them to have the medication that can be administered only enhances our ability to try to help people. And you can see that from January one to present, Norfolk Fire Rescue has administered the drug Narcan a hundred and ninety-three times. Quite a large number of occurrences. Ninety-five percent of those folks arrive at the hospital with spontaneous breathing. And Chief Boone, talk to the uses there. Kim, we could go to the next slide.
So, what an opioid does is it essentially shuts the brain...
Why did you look at the doctor?
He's the doctor!
Please, doctor, that's right.
What it essentially does is shut the brain down, and the brain tells the respiratory system to stop breathing. So, once the opiate's on board, at lower doses, it's for pain control, but at higher doses, and it's unpredictable out in the community what dose you're going to get, but when you take it, it'll shut the respiratory system down. And the most common cause of cardiac arrest in this patient population is they simply stop breathing, they don't get oxygen to their brain or their heart. And what the Narcan does, or naloxone, is reverse the binding the receptors in the brain that the opiates bind to, so they essentially unblock that and allow the body to start breathing.
How many of those a hundred and ninety-eight that were suspected were actually found to be opioids?
About two-thirds. Okay. Our next slide talks a little bit about some of the community outreach activities that we are engaged in. What I would tell you with great pride is that when folks call 911, the fire rescue service in Norfolk is second to none. But we want to try to have an impact in those areas before somebody calls 911. And so, one of the programs that we started in 2017 with two hundred and eighty-two participants just this year is a program called Stop the Bleed. Dr. Wyreider from Centerra Norfolk General is somebody who is working with us on this program of Stop the Bleed. And it's intended for a location, it might be a school, it might be a business, it might be the mall, or something like that, for key people to be trained. One of the training activities we did was with the ushers and those folks at Scope Chrysler Hall, for example, and they received training. We do the training. We instigate the process, we do the training, we encourage it, but then the facility or the entity would buy the equipment to be able to apply a tourniquet, or maybe the clotting material. And just to give you an example, they make the purchase, it can be a kit as small as this that might be in a schoolteacher's desk drawer, or something as big as a backpack, but it's their choice to purchase what they purchase, but we provide the training and then help them to know what kind of a purchase to make. But we are out in the community providing that kind of training. We have a free smoke alarm program, but in Norfolk, we don't just say that we have a free smoke alarm program. We actively pursue and have canvassed more than half of the city. We go out on Saturdays and Sundays, and I would be surprised if at least one of your doors hasn't been knocked on. If not, you know a neighbor that has. We knock on the door, we send at least three companies out on Saturdays and Sundays to knock on a door and say, "Do you have a smoke alarm? Can we check it for you? If you don't have one, we could put one in for you, at no cost." We do buy them, we get some discounted prices, we buy in bulk, but it's free to the community. And the program is one where we actively go knock on doors. If they knock on the door, no one answers, we put on a door hanger that tells people how to go about requesting a visit. And it just happens, I understand that one of you maybe have actually just purchased a new home, and so we did want to make a presentation today, if we could, Doctor, would you help me? Mr. Smith, I believe you've got a... Okay. All right, if your home is two-story, we need to get you another one. And we'll be glad to put it in for you. Okay. Now, one of the things that we have partnered significantly with, and please, Doctor, step up here, Hands Only CPR, this is a program that we've been doing for a while now. First year, 2014, we participated in training a hundred and fifty people. You can see how the numbers went up in 2015, and 2016, four nineteen, and three eighty-one, and already three hundred and sixty-two people year-to-date. It's really critical, even though we respond in under five minutes ninety percent of the time, and you hear me say that a lot, because I'm very proud of that response time, it is so critical for people to be willing to get engaged, and for those few minutes before we arrive, it does make a difference. And jump in.
So I think this next slide really frames the conversation very, very well. There's over three hundred thousand cardiac arrests that occur in the U.S. annually, and it's important to differentiate what a cardiac arrest is versus what a heart attack is. A heart attack is when your artery is blocked and you complain of chest pain, and that can result in a cardiac arrest. The cardiac arrest is when your heart actually stops. And again, heart attack could be one of those causes, but it can go into an irregular rhythm to cause you to go into cardiac arrest, and essentially collapse and become unconscious. Unfortunately, the survival rate across the country for that is only about ten percent. And there's only two things that have actually proven to aid in survival, and that's bystander CPR, and you have to remember, and one of the fascinating statistics is that for every minute that CPR isn't done, your chance for survival decreases by about ten percent. So at ten minutes in a cardiac arrest, your survival is essentially zero unless there's an intervention before that. And one of those interventions is Norfolk Fire Rescue, the men and women who actively intervene, but with an average response time of about five minutes, which is outstanding for a community, you've still potentially lost about fifty percent of your chance for survival before EMS has even arrived. So, what our efforts are, really focus on the community, get the community involved to do bystander CPR before EMS gets there to enhance those survival rates. The second thing that's been proven to increase survival is the use of an automated external defibrillator. You've probably seen them at the airports, or in offices, even here in City Hall, where you simply apply those to the chest, the computer analyzes the rhythm and determines whether a shock needs to happen to restart the cardiac rhythm to a normal cycle.
And we reviewed these slides several times, but we did miss one thing, and that's good, you're going to, the national average survival rate is ten percent, and Norfolk is twenty percent. And you will see with this, in 2017 to present, there have been a hundred and six cardiac arrest events, thirty-one point one percent return to spontaneous circulation, meaning the heart has started, and the national average is twenty-six point three.
So this slide is really a measure of how good our EMS system is doing when they arrive on scene, for our medics to get the return of spontaneous circulation, meaning to restart the heart and get a blood pressure back. That's not survival rate, that's spontaneous circulation until they get to the hospital. So, we're actually doing really well when our EMS gets there on scene and is able to convert the patient back into a normal rhythm.
Next slide, please.
Okay. So here, this slide is one that's particularly challenging that we looked at four or five years ago, and we looked at the community from both an EVMS perspective and a Norfolk Fire Rescue perspective, and we determined that our bystander CPR rate is less than half the national average, so twenty percent. So there's plenty of opportunity for us to engage and involve the community in teaching CPR to get people more involved with that. So a tremendous, tremendous opportunity that, over the last several years, we've trained over a thousand citizens within the city of Norfolk, and we see that only as the tip of the iceberg in terms of what we want to happen over the next few years. So, go ahead, Chief.
No, I was just going to say, in the last presentation, you heard EVMS. Well, once again, Professor, Professor Knapp's students are doing research, trying to help us understand what some of the factors might be, that we have a lower than the national average rate of people willing to be involved to do CPR. And so, the community is really benefiting from having that institution here in our city. They're extremely involved, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment.
Chief, I'll mention that I had a service learning group at EVMS that has over seventy medical students that are actively involved, again, with a partnership with the city of Norfolk, in being out in the community and teaching bystander CPR. So, it really has been a collaborative effort using the resources of both institutions. The next piece on how to improve in this is really to use technology. Technology is a real game changer when it comes to improving survival rates. One of the challenges in the setting of a cardiac arrest is, in the pre-hospital setting, is to get the victim, somebody who knows CPR, to let the person know that knows CPR to get to the victim. So, it's hard without mass training to get the victim someone that can actually help them. This piece of technology, in my mind, is a game changer that hopefully, we're getting ready to implement in the city of Norfolk, and it's called PulsePoint. It's a downloadable app on your phone. You identify yourself as knowing how to do CPR and be willing to intervene if you're able to. What it does is, if you're at the mall, and you're at the movie theater, and at Nordstrom's there's a cardiac arrest, if you're within a certain vicinity of that victim, that we sat, let's say, a hundred yards or so, the app will fire in your pocket, and as you can see up there, there's an indication that CPR is needed and the location that that victim is. It has a second added benefit, and that's that it identifies the nearest AED. So, it really combines those two critical things in a pre-hospital cardiac arrest setting.
And crowdsourcing your EMS.
Exactly, exactly.
And this doesn't come without cost, and when we initially looked at some of these initiatives that we wanted to do, both from a PulsePoint perspective, and I'll mention AEDs here in a little bit, we looked for funding resources and applied to grants, and eventually turned to EVMS's Brock Institute for help with that, and fortunately, they've been able to come through in flying colors.
And so, with that, I'll make the last introduction that I have to make. Hampton Roads native Cynthia Romero, physician, joined EVMS in 2014 as Director of the Brock Institute for Community and Global Health. Prior to that, Dr. Romero served as the Principal Health Advisor to the Governor, Secretary of Health and Human Resources, Virginia General Assembly, and Board of Health from January 2013 to January 2014. As the Virginia State Health Commissioner, Dr. Romero supervised an agency with an annual budget of six hundred and twenty-six million dollars. And what the Brock Institute is going to do for this program is fund the initial startup, but it has an annual cost. And so, for a five-year period, initial startup and four additional years, they are going to cover the cost for this program for us. And so, please, Dr. Romero, this is an opportunity for us to say thank you, and allow her to just offer a few words, if you would, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council leaders, and all leaders in Norfolk. Thank you for that generous introduction, and I simply want to say thank you to your support for these type of initiatives that are not only trying to save lives at the moment of crisis, but in fact, all your initiatives that you're involved in to help prevent crises. So I support you and all your initiatives, and in fact, I'm intimately involved in your Healthy Norfolk Initiative, your Norfolk Healthcare Collaborative, and many of your healthy initiatives for the healthy community, healthy Norfolk. So I just simply want to say, as the Director of the Brock Institute for Community and Global Health, my mission is to support the school's mission, which is to demonstrate that EVMS is the most community-oriented school of medicine and health professions. And in order to continue to do that, we have to go back to where we started forty years ago, which is being dependent on relationships right here at the grassroots level. So I want to say that Dr. Barry Knapp is one of our shining stars, and one of our most pleasant faces, as you can see, of EVMS, and certainly, our partnership with fire and rescue, and all the various entities through the city of Norfolk, is certainly an opportunity for us to continue to enhance our relationship between EVMS and the city of Norfolk. So thank you so much, and again, I'm right there with you to try to help improve the lives and the economy of Norfolk. So thank you so much.
Well, just to wrap up our portion, we want to talk about the PulsePoint, but it's the AED portion of what Brock Institute has done, and I know Dr. Knapp wanted to touch on that just a little bit before we finish.
So, not only from a PulsePoint perspective have, has the EVMS and the Brock Institute kind of partnered with the city of Norfolk, but there's several hundred thousand dollars that are dedicated to the service learning project to enhance community health under the auspices of the bystander CPR project. So, we look for other opportunities within the community, including adding AEDs into the community that will help to enhance those two pieces of the chain of survival. And our thoughts aren't to put more AEDs at the mall, it's really to look in those communities that have higher cardiac arrest rates, which tend to be those areas in the community that don't have much in the way of preventative healthcare, whether or not it's to put an AED at the local 7-Eleven, or even put it on a signpost kind of in the corner where people within the community know where these things exist. Those are opportunities for us, and again, made possible by the generous contributions from the Brock Institute. So we look at those, we've sat down with the police chief as well, looking at a potential opportunity to put AEDs in the back of police cars as well, that would, again, enhance the ability of the city to respond to such cardiac events.
Okay. And before I step aside, I'd let my boss come back up and close us out. Why, there's three pamphlets that you have, and I just want to touch on them. Certainly, the smoke alarm program, once again, you call the number, we're going to come out and offer our expert information to folks. The Hands Only CPR is a program that you request training, civic league, or whatever, you know, anywhere from ten to twenty is a good number for that kind of training, and then also the training on Stop the Bleed. And so, please use us. We want to be used. We want to be out in the community. We are out in the community, and again, Mr. Smith, if you need a second one, please just let me know, okay? Thank you. Mr. Goldsman?
Just to quickly sum us up...
If you look at events around the country, particularly things like the Boston Marathon bombing, other places where we've had significant issues, significant incidents, many times, it's not the first responders that are delivering the first aid that comes to the victims. It's the bystanders. You can see any number of video or film from Boston that shows that it is, it is the people that are around the event that are applying the tourniquets, that are stopping the bleeding, that are doing the things that are necessary to save lives. So it's really important that we get our citizens and our residents involved in this effort and making sure that they are comfortable in being able to render this type of aid, because in reality, they will be the ones that are there first, even before we are as first responders. So not unlike when you get to, when you think about World War II and civil defense and how everybody got involved and everybody was united around this one effort, we need to do the same thing with our residents when it comes to public safety, being able to create public safety within their own neighborhoods. And you can see from the Police Department and from the Fire Department, they're well on the way. And just to give you a little blurb, when you come back from break, we are going to be talking about regional homeland security. We are doing some fantastic things, working with the city of Chesapeake, the city of Virginia Beach, the FBI, the Naval Criminal Investigative Service, and Homeland Security Investigations, to talk about regional response structures should we have a major event in the city. It can range from anywhere, from a terrorist event to a hurricane, to anything that affects all of our jurisdictions across this entire region. And we're really excited about that, how that's going to go, and we're making a lot of headway there. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Chief Boone, Chief Wise, Dr. Knapp, Dr. Romero, Timothy City Manager Goldsmith, thank you all.
Yeah. What I'd like to say is that in addition to everything that the Chief Wise and his group are doing, they have also come over to the South Side where we have three or four shipyards, and we are dealing with emissions and fugitive dust. And they come on a regular basis to see what they can do to assist the residents of the South Side in regards to arresting the fugitive dust that we have from sandblasting. And I just want to know, when are you going to put the fire station on Lafayette Boulevard? It has to be the next fire station to come on Lafayette Boulevard. That's what we need. Angela and...
We are working on it. We are working on it.
And I really believe that that will lift that entire corridor up. You know, I really believe it will lift that entire corridor up. So...
And Mr. Riddick, the situation is finding a large enough space that the footprint for the fire station.
The spot between Lynn's Avenue, where they had the staging area for public works, is that large enough, Chief?
No, sir, not for the kind of station that we need to build today with the water collection and drainage and so forth.
Okay.
Using best practices, it's not large enough.
Well, thank you. A couple of themes to be taken out of there, and maybe the biggest one, you hear us talk a lot about collaboration. And I don't think you see it anywhere any better than in public safety, whether that's between the police and fire, between the police and the community, between the fire and community, or between the localities. You know, I think we get dinged a lot that at times we, as a region, don't act as a region. But I got to tell you, from a public safety perspective, we do. And I think you'll see some fun things that we'll talk about, as Mike mentioned, in the fall. So with that, I'm going to...
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it seems like, listening to all this, there's some really low-hanging fruit here. I mean, CPR, tourniquets, this stuff isn't rocket science. And we've got some captive audiences here. You know, City Hall alone, everybody should be taught, schools, our civic leagues. This just seems like something almost we should mandate. I don't know. I mean, does anybody else feel this way, or...
It's mandated that educators have to have CPR training.
What about this, our workers?
Yeah, I don't know. We've done it in City Hall, I'm looking over at Mike, and we have. So Mike went over, and Mike said, "Chief, what have we done in terms of city employees for training?"
And if we're not doing it ourselves, then we can't ask our citizens.
Yeah, we have performed...
You want to step up here?
We have performed the hands-only CPR training here in the building. As far as Norfolk Public Schools go, the Stop the Bleed program, they have made a decision that everybody involved in their athletic programs will go through the training that we're going to provide for Stop the Bleed. So while I agree completely, we can do more, but we are making headway. And I think as we get our foot in the door, we'll get the second foot in the door, and then somebody can follow in behind us.
How much does an AED cost?
Around $8,000 to $12,000.
Oh, is that all?
Actually, that's...
Is that all?
But a standard one that would be off the community is probably around $2,000.
Because I was thinking, if we could just put them in police cars of those endangered neighborhoods alone, you know, I mean, that'd be one way. I know you're looking for spots to hang it up, but it would seem like maybe if we put them in the cars...
Hopefully, we can put them in every police car.
Yeah, I'm surprised we don't have. I understand the limitations.
I was thinking that very same thing.
Yeah, I would totally agree.
I got my cars.
So I have training in the...
Do you all know how to, what is it? All I know is...
Standby.
Standby. Standby.
Yeah, that's all I know. We just need hands-on.
But also, to be trained in the AED as a package deal, that's what I get. To be trained in both is really, really good to have, to be trained with both at the same time. And that way, you take care of everything.
Just a comment on that. That's about 25 minutes of training. So that's how long it takes to teach hands-only CPR. We've eliminated the Mount the Mount American Heart Association. So it's really a maximum of 30-minute course to learn bystander CPR and AED. So our hopes are not only combining the teaching of the bystander CPR, but for the people that we train, also download the PulsePoint application to kind of multiply those forces.
Absolutely.
So Dr. Whibley hit it exactly. The reason we brought this to you is because we do see it as low-hanging fruit. There is an opportunity for folks to really make a difference in the community. I think we're doing a lot to get that word out, but there's no better forum than to sit here on television and let you all, let the community know what's out there, and we'll do it. So thank you. With that, I'm going to shift to the Open Data Program and ask Stephen DeBarry and Pamela Moreno to step up. You'll remember, we were selected as What Works City back in late winter, early spring. Said we would focus on an open data policy that we would bring to you by the summer. That is on your agenda for the next meeting. You've got a copy at your place. And obviously, we believe, I believe, that information is currency. Y'all heard me say this, and we want to give it away as much as we can. And this is the way we're going to start that and put some policy around how we make this stuff available and allow citizens to have it and to innovate with it and to be informed.
I just want to make one last comment, and the Chief Wise touched on it. I mean, we are very fortunate and blessed to have our chief and our police chiefs working together. There are some communities where they're feuding with each other, and they are like the Hatfields and the McCoys. And so we are very, very fortunate that they work so well together and that they collaborate, you know, on behalf of the citizens. So kudos to everybody involved for playing nice.
Okay, great.
Stephen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Manager. Back in March, I was thrilled to announce that the city of Norfolk was actually selected to participate in the Bloomberg Initiative, What Works Cities. Really, that was all about getting 100 mid-sized cities together, figuring out how to leverage data to make residents and businesses and our lives better. Today, I'm just as excited to say that we've completed the initial engagement with What Works City, and we're here to share our progress with you tonight. Like many things, this was a Team Norfolk effort. We had participation from all departments. We received feedback from the public. But I did want to take a minute and introduce the core team that really has worked really hard in what I call the sprint of the last 120 days. A lot of times, you don't see the folks who really have done the work. So from information technology, I think you know guys, but they can stand up, Frasier Picard, and Pamela Moreno is going to be giving the brief, Kyle Spencer, Chip Finch, and also from Budget Shop, Peter Burick, and from Maricom Marketing and Communications, Michelle Washington, Mary Keough, and Chris Free. So I'm going to turn the brief over to Pamela. I'm really excited about this, and I hope you are too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you the details of Norfolk's Open Data Program. I'm very excited about it. And if any of you know me, you would be surprised that, because data has not always been my thing. So I'm here to share my enthusiasm with you. Here's an overview of tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about the What Works Cities partnership. We're going to talk about what is open data. Some of us aren't familiar with that term. Why is open data important? Talk about how we developed the policy and the overview of the policy, the process that the program will take to release data sets, how we are gathering public input and outreach, and our next steps. Next slide. So here you are. Last March, as Stephen said, celebrating our selection as a What Works Cities. This was very exciting. Norfolk was the 65th city selected to participate in this initiative. It's sponsored by Bloomberg, so I can never say that word, and I practice a lot, philanthropies. It's designed to help mid-sized cities across the nation improve transparency and make better data-driven decisions, and in the end, really help us do right and do what works. That's where the name came from. So being chosen was a great honor, and I think it was a testament to the work that happened before even I started in this program. We already had a lot of data that we opened to the public. And keep in mind that only 100 cities will be invited to join this initiative. So it really is a big honor. Next slide. So as Stephen mentioned, we often called this our race to open data because the support that we got from What Works Cities, the intense weekly support, only lasts for 120 days. That's what we called the sprint. So in just 120 days, the team, with assistance from our partners, created the policy that provides the framework for the Open Data Program. But of course, it's in fact a marathon, because this work is just beginning. We have a robust Open Data Program that we'll be sharing with you to increase transparency and efficiency. And I'd like to mention that What Works Cities is not stopping their support at this, you know, at the end of our 120 days. They are going to be helping us throughout, and there's other programs that we are, that we're working on. We just learned today that we sort of reached the second phase of maybe becoming a certified What Works City. So they're very engaged with us, and we really appreciate their support. Next slide. So what is open data? So one term that I was using that other cities use is open government, and I think that it helps people understand what it means. It's data that's available to everyone, online, free, no registration required. It's available without legal restrictions, on use and reuse, available in a variety of file formats that can be manipulated and analyzed, and available without making a formal request. So what does that mean? I think, as the City Manager said, you know, we don't own the data. We collect data as employees and as contractors. And, but that is actually our citizens' data. So unless there's specific restrictions on this data, which certainly we know there will be some legal or security restrictions, we should put that data out, open data, open government. So some examples might include the number and location of potholes filled annually, or location and capacity of city-owned parking lots. If you, we learned today about some data that's being kept about mosquitoes. So any of this data is, it should be shared out with the public. And you'll see why at the next slide. So why is it important? Why is opening this data up, sharing it with our citizens, why is that something that we care about? Because it supports our council priorities, it increases transparency and accountability, expands citizen engagement, encourages innovation, improves data quality, enhances staff efficiency, and facilitates interdepartmental cooperation. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples, because we can read these things and we can say, well, you know, that could apply to anything. So I'm going to give you some external examples and some internal examples of how you could use data that's released. So some of you may be familiar with a group called Code for America Brigade. So this is a group of volunteer hackers, and that's not always a bad word, so I want people to know that. These are people who contribute their talents, they are techies, who contribute their talents towards improving the way local governments use the web and applications. So here in town, or in Hampton Roads, a local example is, they created an HRT app so that you can find out in real time when the next bus or train is coming. You can download this app, and instead of, you know, hoping that it's going to come, you can actually read and say that it's coming in a minute. One of the things I learned about, which I thought was pretty cool when I was at a seminar in, for What Works Cities, in, there's a lot of this open data work that's happening in New York City. And one example was a volunteer discovered a correlation between missed trash pickups and crime. He actually looked at two databases of spikes in crime and trash that had not, that stops had not been made. And he mashed that together and discovered this trend and shared that with the city, who then were able to use their resources in a better way to deal with that issue. So those are some external, you know, sort of hackers using our data. But of course, we talked about how it can be used internally. So we think that there's about 400 databases that exist in the city. And surely, there will be some that are duplicative. So that, just on its face right there, is going to be a way that we can become more efficient as government staff. Also, we all have dealt with FOIA requests, and often, the same things are requested over and over again. So that's going to save time and money if we can figure out which requests are frequently asked for and just put them out on the web so that people can get them for themselves. So how did we develop the policy? We worked hard to get input from a variety of sources. So of course, our partners at What Works Cities assisted us. They gave us a template that we could start with and talked to us about best practices. They also directed us to check out what other cities had have done. And so we looked at what, how other cities had done their open data policies. We vetted it through city staff, and we are getting input from our community, which I will talk about in the next slide. Next. So you have the policy at your place, and here's what you're going to see. It's got definitions of key terms. It defines the governance of the Open Data Program. In other words, how are we going to move through the process of releasing data? It details process for managing and releasing the data, and it clarifies the Open Data Program requirements. So how are we going to do this? How is the program going to work? What are we going to do to make sure that we are doing right by our citizens and our data? Because we can't just go out right now and say, all right, put all 400 databases online. So for many reasons, the sheer volume, but also security and safety, et cetera. So we're getting input from three different ways. One is from council priorities. So obviously, you as council can say, we're interested in seeing this data released. Public input, there's a variety of ways that we can get input from the public. We, we, I failed to mention that, well, I guess I'll cover that in the next one. We're getting public input. And input from the Open Data Advisory Committee, which is an upper-level committee that will have residents and representatives from business and higher ed council. So this will be sort of a, sort of external committee that will, that will give us input about what we should be looking at. That goes into the, all that input comes into the Open Data Leadership Team, which is high-level folks, the Deputy City Manager, the CIO, other people that are, that are reviewing and prioritizing these data sets based on input that they have. Then it will go for legal review. The next step is legal review. The city attorney's office will be reviewing. The city, the city attorney's office will be reviewing everything to make sure we're not releasing anything that's sensitive or illegal. And then technical staff, which is, you know, some IT folks, but others throughout the city that will make sure it's in a format that can be, back to what we said, why is it open data? It has to be, be able to be manipulated and moved. So we're not just going to be throwing a PDF out there because that doesn't help anybody. So, so it goes through all that, and then the data set is released and announced to the public. And we'll talk on the next slide about some of our, how we're going to share with the public. So you can see, we put a lot of thought into how are we going to get public input. So the policy has been released for public input on our Open City Hall portal, which is a portal that we have where people can read things and weigh in on it. Also, What Works Cities has agreed to share it with some of their partners and some of their databases, some of their, they'll be tweeting it and posting it as well so that we can get outside input on the policy. Our marketing communications department has come up with a brilliant campaign to announce the program. It doesn't work to have open government if we don't tell people about it. So they're going to be helping us get the word out in a variety of functions, in a variety of ways. This next one, I'm really excited... This next one, I'm really excited about, educate residents about open data. So we're not, we are not just interested in the techie crowd, although certainly, they are going to be excited about this. But some things I learned through my work with What Works Cities is that we really want all residents to know about this, or residents that are civically engaged. And so we envision doing some things called analog hackathons. So that's where we go to a civic league or some other community meeting, and we've actually got flip charts and whiteboards, and we are doing basically an open data 101. What is open data? How can you use it? What is data? So we are not only aiming for the upper, for the tech people. We want everybody to be engaged in this. Also, we've talked about doing some man-on-the-street thing. So some of, maybe our interns would go out and meet people with a laptop or a tablet and say, you know, hey, did you know this data's available? And here's how you can use it. So we've got, you know, again, kudos to our marketing communications team for coming up with a really good campaign. Of course, everything, oops, back up. So everything we do is going to encourage visitors to our website where the portal will be housed. Portal is just a fancy word for the, for the page where all this open data will be. And again, there's many ways that we can get input on potential data release. If you're at the portal, there's a place where you can request it. We'll make ourselves available. I'll put my email address out there. Certainly, people can ask through you guys and through the advisory committee. So we want to hear what people want. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? Well, you have on your docket for next week to approve the open data policy. And by the end of this summer, we want to have our initial data inventory compiled. We've had two meetings so far with our open data liaisons, who are staff members sort of throughout the departments in the city who manage databases, if you will. So we've, we're working with them to, to explain to them the value of this program and get them on board with helping us. So really, the goal is to have them share with us what databases they are because we can't prioritize if we don't know what's out there. And What Works Cities was nice enough to fly in and come to the second meeting to answer questions. In the fall, we are going to start our community outreach and identify committee members to serve on the committees. In fall, also in the fall, would, so after we identify members, of course, we'll have our first meeting of the Open Data Advisory Committee. We'll, we'll release our first data set in the fall. And of course, as I mentioned before, this is ongoing. So it's not, it's not the sprint where we'll say, okay, here's some databases. This is an ongoing thing, and the policy and the program will show that we're constantly looking for input, and we'll be constantly opening data or opening our government up. So up next is a short video that our marketing communications team put together. And this will be included with all of our online outreach.
What Works Cities is designed to accelerate cities' use of data to improve people's lives. It's a national initiative to help 100 mid-sized American cities to better use data to improve services, inform local decision-making, and engage residents. It's an honor for Norfolk to have been chosen for this initiative. Over the last four months, the city of Norfolk and What Works Cities have joined forces to deliver an open data program. Open data is the future and is helping local leaders identify and invest in what works. Open data is information that can be freely used, analyzed, and redistributed by anyone. An open data portal is a tremendous win for residents, making government more transparent and efficient, and increasing citizen engagement. Upon council approval, we will roll out our open data program. To learn more or to get involved, visit us at our website or check us out on Facebook. See the future of how we do business as a local government.
Thank you so much for your time and attention. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Johnson?
I would just like to say, it's really good to hear some of the key points that you mentioned in your presentation, such as educating the residents. We continue, as a council, to say that we have to do a better job at communicating with our residents. So it was really nice to hear you use the word "educating residents" because that's what it's going to take to get everybody involved. And the outreach that you're willing to commit to, being boots on the ground, that means you're going door-to-door, you're making contact with the residents, even if you take your laptop off, out. We're dealing with some forms of communications technology as well as having direct contact with the residents. And the other one for our consideration, that when we're considering this open data, that we're going to be working on improving our website so that we can make it accessible to residents, that they don't have to go through 10 clicks to get to what they're actually looking for. That's what our residents really want to see improved with our website. They want it quick, they want it fast, they need the information. And I see the open data also as a process of what our council has been talking about, being the dashboard that we're always talking about. Let's lay out what we're doing in our city. Let's tell our story. The citizens want to know, well, what's happening in my area? What projects are going on from start to midterm to the, to the very end? So if we can provide those things to our citizens, I think that we're on our way to, to being a city that does work. So thank you so very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I like the idea of the most frequently asked FOIA requests. And I think that's really great because I think it will save on staff time and dollars and all that kind of stuff. So I really like that. I mean, I had the whole thing, but I really liked that.
Also, jumping on that, one of the best practices that we learned from another city is that sometimes there's FOIA requests that you get over and over again that you aren't going to ever put out there for whatever reason, sensitivity or security, I can think of some police ones. And so you basically have a list that says, here's, here's data sets that won't be released. So it's basically asked and answered. So you don't have to keep going back to that and saying, you know, here's why we, we won't do it. You know, it's one time, done, we can't do it.
And also, too, in that stating the reason, if there's like a statute or if it's personnel, or if it's whatever the reason is, you can always refer that person to that section on the website and say, here it is, here's, and there's why we won't do it. So you can refer it back to, there's some tangible place they can go.
I think our FOIA folks are happy with this idea.
Just wanted to ask maybe Doug or Stephen, is there a way to also make sure that our budget is live on this so that you can actually watch the money go away? As it's, I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah, I hear you.
I mean, that you.
I don't know if we can be that, quite that immediate, but that is part of what we wanted. I think it's maybe the thing that folks are most interested in is, how is the money spent?
Right.
And what are the expenses? So yeah, that's clearly a direction we're going in. How immediate that will be.
Is it Richmond that's done it? That's been able to do it?
Yeah. Just letting you know, I asked, I asked for that five, six years ago. So we're still behind the times on that.
We are catching up.
Stephen, you want a comment?
Well, I would just say that the portal that we're using is a product called Socrata, which all cities use. San Francisco, the cities that are really the models for this. And actually, I believe Greg Budget and Doug have looked at a module within Socrata that tracks budgets very powerful. I think we would get after what you're talking about.
Okay.
So this really is, we hope, becomes part of our DNA, our culture. I mean, it is this idea, y'all have been loud and clear of, call it transparency, call it openness, call it efficiency, but it's letting folks know what we're doing, how we're spending their money, how we're providing services, and hopefully giving them an opportunity to help us innovate. So we're, we're very excited and appreciate the time. And if anybody's got questions between now and next Tuesday, listen.
With that, I'd ask Deputy Attorney Adam Alina to come forward and, as we've discussed, some changes in state law relative to the short-term rentals and what we call, most commonly, Airbnb.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, members of city council, and mayor. I'll be brief on this. I know I've spoken to you, I think it was last year, about the chestnut that is the difficult question of how to appropriately balance the regulation of this somewhat disruptive development in the, in the transient occupancy economy. So, next slide. Quickly, two slides just to close the door on the General Assembly's effort to solve this riddle. And I have, in the background there, failed. This was the Limited Residential Lodging Act that was passed last year but required, as part of the budget process, to be adopted again, the same way this year by the General Assembly, and it ultimately did not pass. It had some provisions in it that were very restrictive on localities and basically required everyone in the Commonwealth to treat, to permit short-term rentals and to treat them the same way. The tax structure was centralized through the Tax Commissioner in Richmond. And these were the provisions that essentially constrained what localities could do. There were a couple of permissions in that old bill, but they were very limited. So, slide. So that bill went away, and instead, we got Senate Bill 1578. It's, it's a very stripped-down version and basically says, it defines what a short-term rental is, but it basically says that localities can set up a short-term rental registry. They can charge a fee to register, and then they can have a penalty if you don't register. And then if they find you operating and not registered, then you can be penalized monetarily that way as well. The most important feature of the new bill is the last line on this slide, which is, the bill expressly says that local general land use and zoning authority is not affected by this state law. I have categorized, and it turns out, most localities have now categorized the realm of short-term rentals into two general categories. The first one I'm calling the guest stay is where the owner of the residence is home and is present during the guest's stay. So this sort of looks like relatives visiting. It's actually something that's essentially legal already in Norfolk because Norfolk, likely because of its history as a military town, has allowed up to two borders in any single-family home. So that type of activity is typically not noticed by neighbors because it's very similar to just anybody visiting or staying at your house while you're home. The second classification, what we're calling the vacation home, is the one that, not always, but sometimes goes off the rails. This is where the guest is given complete run and complete use of the entire property. It's usually a vacant home in a single-family neighborhood. Currently, that activity is illegal in all zoning districts in Norfolk. So we have been watching what other localities have been doing. Arlington started, I think, last December and finished up after some amendments in January of this year with a registration type of process based on those two tiers, the home stays, which were permitted, and the guest stays, which are still not legal. Fairfax is right now in an outreach mode and is conducting surveys and doing, doing outreach throughout Fairfax through the end of August. So all the localities are now starting to move on what might work for each of them. And so we've put together this sort of starting point as a, as a proposal and to generate input from you all as to what Norfolk might want to do. We think that setting up the registry and allowing guest stays by right with the owner present, limited to two guests per bedroom, a total of six in any single residence, limiting the number of days per year that any particular guest can stay so it doesn't turn into an apartment building or a rooming house, that should be allowed by right and be monitored through the registration system. As a, as a second option, maybe to be considered at a later, later phase, probably not while we're trying to figure out how the registry works and how much cooperation we have, we might consider whether vacation home rentals could be allowed. It might be, because again, we have preserved our zoning authority, that we would do them by conditional use permit. As you know, that allows you to impose conditions on the operation. It allows you to put sunset clauses on the operation so that if it doesn't work out, it doesn't have to continue.
Should we tax them?
All of these can be taxed. There might be some thresholds that we could work through the commission of revenue as to when the tax starts, but there are some uniformity aspects that we'd have to review. And then the vacation homes could also be done by right. It could have standard requirements in it, and we could have the expiration of one year on the by-right vacation homes as well. And that's because all of the registrations are annual. So if you were to do a registration for, that permitted the vacation homes, you could get a look at those each year. If you found that one was a problem, it could not be renewed. We would not have the ability for a by-right vacation home to shut it immediately under the current, under the current statute. I think that's my last slide. So that's, that's what we think other localities are trying to do, and that stays, I think, within what the state was wanting to give to localities.
Adam, one of the things I think we need to stress is that the registry and imposing penalties is permissive, is not mandatory. Localities can opt to or opt not to impose penalties up to $500.
Correct. In fact, the registry is optional. You don't even have to have a registry.
And the, and the second piece of this, for those who want to rent their homes on a short-term basis, if they want to serve alcohol, they need to seek a ABC bed and breakfast license to do that.
Yes, the bill included some amendments to the ABC statutes so that there could be an opportunity with ABC's permission and a license to serve guests. But that's run by the state.
And the third and final thing, we're likely to see legislation in the 2018 session to, by the, by the industry to dial back, pull back on the legislation that just passed because they are very opposed to the current legislation. So we're monitoring that as well.
Can you explain what industry you're talking about?
The.
Airbnb.
Airbnb, no. The Hotel Association, they very much are in favor.
Right. Little bit.
Exactly. But, exactly. So we're monitoring bills that may, may be introduced to try to dial back on this legislation. A lot of work went into this legislation. And so, Adam, thank you and for your report, okay?
If we opted to do a registry, wouldn't that be something that would be included in that open data piece? Where folks could go online and see the registry and see the properties that have, you know, I mean, if there's an issue with the property or whatever.
That's registered for Norfolk?
Yeah, if we opted to do that, could we make sure that that information was made public?
If we do a registry, there's, we have to somehow market and advertise that the property is registered and whether or not they have obtained the ABC license. If that property want to serve, you know, ABC, part of, under the bed and breakfast.
Yeah, no, but I don't mean, I don't mean that about the alcohol. I mean, in general terms, if we require a registry, which I favor, and a penalty for not registering, which I also favor, can we put that information, that registry list, online?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, go ahead.
If you're, if you're registered by that token, do you also have to have a business license?
Yes.
Have a Virginia reg, tax registration and pay lodging tax in the city of Norfolk? I would, I would suggest, yes, to offer.
Yeah, me too. I agree. I think we need to require them to have a, if they're registered, they need to have a license.
Because they're acting as a business. I have, I have a vacation home in Virginia, and I'm doing all those things. And I'm.
I think there are some de minimis thresholds, but I don't know who would register if they were only going to do this occasionally. So in all likelihood, if you're registered and you're in this line of business, it will come with full compliance with the commission of revenue.
Yes.
Do we have the capacity to, to be checking on these? Or, you know, it's great for us to make these rules, but if we don't have anybody out there that's really able to.
Absolutely. The, the, the state law doesn't specifically authorize an inspection program. But if you, because we have zoning powers, if you were only to permit certain types of short-term rentals by special exception or some other zoning tool, then you could have a condition in there that would permit. in there that would permit inspections or other types of monitoring.
But I'm not asking, can we? I'm asking, are we?
When we bring the policy forward here, we're going to have to take hours.
Meaning, do we have the staff that can?
We're going to have to bring that piece with us.
Be checking on this. I mean, we're having, we're struggling with determining houses that are basically boarding houses all over our cities. And I just, you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't go ahead with this, but I think we ought to look at this seriously. If we're offering this to, as relief to our citizens, then we have to figure out a way to make sure that we're actually enforcing it.
So Dr. Whibley, we will come back, we will come back with the policy. Now, remember, the registry is permissive. Some localities, some of the rural localities probably won't, but Norfolk, maybe Virginia Beach, and other municipalities in Hampton Roads would register. The reason that we would require the registry, that is the only tool that we would have to regulate and to tax. Yes?
Tommy and I received an email today from a resident in Ocean View, who has claims that the house next door has a recurring Airbnb rental, and there are problems on a regular basis. By the time we get to them, whoever's there has gone. So if we had a registry and the police went to go visit, ideally, it would pop up that this is a short-term rental, and we could start to track and find out the bad guys.
Registry is important. We'll come back with the policy.
That's why I was asking about being able.
Yes. So we bring the policy back.
Got it. We got, we got the direction. I'm going to do quick, two quick announcements. Lori Kraus tells me that How to Get Rid of Your Geese is on the website.
Excellent.
That's quick. And I do want to take a moment. At 5:00 today, David Ricks went on it on personal time, and so he's here because he enjoys being with you all, but as a practical matter, today is his last day as our public works director, and I just want to say. Today is literally it, and his department had a great celebration for him, but David's left to quite an impact, and we wish him nothing but great success and come back quickly. All right. So with that, Mayor, we've got a couple of contract items and a real estate item for closed sessions. I'd ask folks if you can move quickly. I would also, now, I know people are looking at the clock, that clock is fast, so it is actually 6:33. So that's about four minutes fast, and we're going to be quick. So we can get a motion to go into closed.
So.
Move the number of someone. November 17, 6:33 PM, filed for set out clause 73, subsection A, section 242, 31, 3711.
Clickers up there. I guess it was.
Yeah, it just, actually, it just panicked.
Or whatever.
Rediscussion of the acquisition of real property of public purpose, appreciated area, disposition of publicly held real property on the bright area of the city. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McQuillan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.